Economic Development Committee, September 19th, 2024.
I will call the regular Economic Development Committee to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are Vicky Deschawn, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. Carolyn Shireman is absent. Do we have any public participation for economic development? Seeing none, move on to the approval of minutes from the August 22nd, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting. Have a motion.
I move that we approve the April 22nd, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting minutes.
My second.
The motion from Mr. Deschawn, a second from Mr. Moritz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Moving on to CEDAs. We had it in the agenda. We didn't know that there were two different CEDAs. There's a Citizen Entrepreneurial Development Agency, which deals with businesses, and then we have the Cooperative Economic Development Agreement, which deals with what we're looking to do. So, I made that correction for myself.
And Zion?
Yeah.
You're too kind in not stating that I was the one who put the wrong CEDA down. So, I do apologize for that, and thank you for catching me.
To be fair, I honestly didn't even know that there were two different CEDAs.
And if I may ask again, so I can write this down, it's properly called Cooperative?
Cooperative Economic Development Agreement.
Thank you.
I did have a look when I was looking this up last night. The city of Medina actively has a CEDA agreement and a JED agreement within the city. They have, with York Township, they have a CEDA which consists of 14 parcels of land located on Stone, Branch, and West Smith Roads, containing approximately 273.18 acres. The agreement with York Township permits annexation of properties without being detached from township itself. The city will not annex any other properties in York Township for the period of the agreement, which is 50 years. The CEDA agreement expands the city's available industrial zoned land by the approximately 273.18 acres. It gives a map of the property for a detailed relationship for both. And it also has, for Montville Township, in 2010, the city of Medina, Ohio, and Montville Township joined forces to create a Joint Economic Development District within commercial zones along sections of State Route 3 and 18 in Montville Township. The economic development tool benefits landowners and business owners who elect to join. A portion of the revenue created in the JED can be used by businesses for current and future property improvement. When we talked to David Zach, the way that I understood the separation between JED and CEDA was that JED needed council approval, whereas CEDA was pretty much administrative, where it didn't really need to go through council unless something else needed to be added to it, was my understanding.
And if I remember also, I do believe the JED was not receptive to annexation-
Yes.
But the CEDA-
Yes.
Welcome to annexation.
How long were we not able to annex with the JED? Was it three years or five years?
You know, I did not bring my paperwork, so I am not going to say, in case I say it wrong.
Yeah, I feel improper just to make that assumption, because I don't remember either, but I think it was somewhere in between that time span. If we had approved a JED, we wouldn't be able to annex for a certain number of years, whereas the CEDA, we can just-
Correct.
Just go through it with no problem, I believe. Do we have anything from Sarah yet?
No. I'm wanting to recall that, and I believe I forwarded to you that email we're looking at, it was going to be like a couple months-
Yeah.
-before she was able, well, she was going to try and make, well, she was going to make contact with the townships and see if they were even interested in sitting down with the council as a whole, like a workshop, and just discuss what JED is about and what CEDA is about. And at that time, she was going to have individuals come who were knowledgeable of those two programs to do the talking. I have not heard back from her, and I mean, she just, you know, sort of-
She has a lot on her plate.
Yeah, correct, correct. And again, it may be that the townships may not even want to, you know, discuss, but that's why I referred the CEDA, was so that if we do have our little workshop, and then we do want to discuss, you know, we have it on our open, or on our open projects list, so I don't know if, you know, you want to maybe just drop her a little email and-
Well, she reached out to me, and she said that she wanted to meet with me at some point, so-
Same with me.
So, we're trying to get that scheduled right now.
Okay, fine.
Yes.
I wasn't sure if I was able to speak or not.
Yeah, you can now.
Okay, Mike Keefe, zoning administrator. The thing with the CEDA program with Medina County and those townships out there, they are more developed than the townships in Crawford County. So, I'm not sure what townships would be interested in that program here. It might be something to reach out to the Crawford County Township Association and go through them if the trustees haven't responded. Sometimes it's easier to deal with the Township Association than some of the townships themselves, especially right now, because most of the trustees are in their fields.
Yeah, I think, I think if we can't get anything around, we might go ahead and go that route as well. I basically just threw the Medina article out as just an example of what we could do with both, if we had both.
Because, I mean, like, Montville Township on the east side of Medina, they have, I'm pretty sure that township has more population in it than all of Crawford County.
Right.
So, because I do believe they have their own, I'm not sure if Montville, yeah, Montville does have their own police department, fires, everything, utilities, water comes through Medina, real water, I do believe. So, yeah, they're pretty much self-ruled. So, they're basically like, I don't know, trying to think of a township around here that's similar. But yeah, they're all self-ruled, or they have their own government. So, I'm not sure how many townships around here would be similar, so.
Yes.
Zion, if I may ask, either yourself, or me, or if Chris wants to, maybe if we just, you know, dropped an email to Sarah, just say that, you know, we were talking about this upcoming workshop, if you will, just checking in to see how things were coming, and then you could pass on, or whomever sent the email, what Mike Keefe mentioned, that if she's not been able to contact the townships individually, maybe wants to go to the Crawford County Township Association. I have a feeling, Sarah probably knows that, but, you know, we could pass it on, or, just a thought, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll get on that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other discussion for CEDA? All right. Moving on to open projects, do we see anything in open projects to remove, talk about, elaborate upon?
I didn't see any, no. Sorry about that. I didn't see anything.
No, you're all right. I didn't see anything either.
Nope, we have the shortest list, I think.
I like that.
Yeah, I was gonna say yes.
Because everything else on the list has to do with annexation.
Right.
Different.
Do we have any further public participation for economic development? Seeing none, I will adjourn at 6:10 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, September 19th, 2024.
I'm going to call Public Lands and Buildings to order at 6:11 PM. Members present are Zion Hickman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Sarah, and Sheriff Chair. Carolyn Shireman is absent. First on the list, do we have any public participation?
Clarissa Slater, 3645, State Route 4. So, I don't have a specific issue with what has been referred, but I think this is maybe the best way to address issues regarding procedural or parliamentary issues moving forward, so I'm just going to bring up when I see things that may cause bias within the council. So, I just wanted to go over and raise that I was not enthused on how the baby pool was referred to council, or committee, excuse me. The presiding officer is not supposed to state, actually, talk about themselves in the first person at all, but they're not supposed to lead and/or give opinions on what they would like to see and not see, they're supposed to remain impartial. So, anytime any things that are said, like, I think, I would like to see this being referred, again, like I said, I don't actually disagree with the baby pool, I just want to reiterate that, and to, for reference, so you have it. It's in Roberts Rules, it's Chapter 3, Section 13, Customs observed by the presiding officer, and it does state that they should be impartial and no longer, or no, do not refer to themselves in the first person or give opinions. So, just something to look at, to refresh on, and it'll come up, I'm sure, more in the ad hoc, but I just wanted to present that, so thank you.
Okay, do we have any more public participation? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the minutes from August 22nd, 2024, I would entertain a motion to approve said minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 22nd, 2024 Special Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Hickman.
I'll second that.
With a second from Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now, I had a conversation today with Mr. Starner, and he said that Mr. Dunn would like to present us with information prior to doing anything really about the splash pad or the baby pool conversation, and asked us if we could table this for tonight. So, unless somebody had something really important to add to it, is Mr. Keefe? No? Anybody else?
I'm here.
Okay. Oh, you, yes.
I can talk. I did talk to Mr. Rumsberger and Mr. Dunn about this, both issues, the next one coming up too. Yeah, we need to have them come in, both of them come in and-
Yeah.
-talk to us about what's going on. I know some information now that I didn't have before, by talking to both of them.
Yeah, so, if anybody's not opposed, I'm going to go ahead and ask to have that table. So, we're back to open projects. Do we have anything on open projects we need to talk about right now?
I don't think so.
Okay, do we have any more public participation? Seeing none, I am going to go ahead and adjourn Public Lands at 6:15 PM.
Service Committee, September 19th, 2024.
I call Service Committee into order at 6:16. Members present, Eric Sher, Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, I, myself, Chair. Any public participation at this point? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion for approval of minutes for September 5th, 2024.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from September 5th, 2024 Regular Service Committee meeting.
I'll second.
First by Aaron Sher, second by Zion Hickman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Next is Title IX. We have a new version of it, but I'm pretty sure it's pretty close to the old one that we already have. The first one has already been fixed for us from the last meeting we had, and that was the million dollars, set back, it said $100,000, and that would be 903.01. Permit required for emergency exception for public utilities. So, that one is fixed. Anybody see anything else that might, might need attention?
Vicky Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. On your 903.01-
Yes.
After permit required, there needs to be inserted bond required. Because when you change the 903.01, that was to add in about the performance bond, the million dollar. And looking at all the other drafts, bear with me here, oh, 12-2024, which was passed on April the 2nd, 2024, which dealt with the 903.01, and that was the section that Mr. Fankhauser had brought up and said, hey, I think you need to change your draft to incorporate that that was passed under Ordinance Number 12. And if you look under ordinance, or if you look at Ordinance 12-2024, the 903.01 states, permit required, semicolon, bond required, and then semicolon, emergency exception for public utility.
I think I'd something looking to change in there, if it needs to be changed.
Correct. There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Moritz, I've got one for you as well. Still in 903.01 on B, where it says that it needs to be executed by a responsible surety company licensed to provide services in the state of Ohio. So, in the insurance industry, there are what's called standard or traditional markets, and then there's one that's called excess and surplus lines. Your excess and surplus lines, while they are legally allowed to write policies in Ohio, the wording of that is that they are not licensed in the state of Ohio, and that's basically, and I don't have the definition right in front of me, but if, if I want to sell a bond to somebody, and I don't have a traditional market for it, I can go to the excess and surplus lines market, and I've sold, you know, bonds and policies that way. So, I'll get you a better wording for that. I understand the intent of what we're trying to say, to make sure it's a real bond and not something that somebody just made up, but the wording's going to need to be changed. I'll get you an example of what, what would make more sense to cover that.
And also, when we make these changes, is this something we have to do with the administration, again, go back through them and back through?
I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to let them see what you've changed and see if they have any questions, and, you know, I think for what, what we've just discussed these two tonight, they, they make obvious sense, you know, so they might just need to hear the reasoning why they were changed. I think that would be good to do.
Under 903.99, under penalties, I was wondering if that was high enough or not? Hundred dollars. That'd be a question for the administration to guarantee if we wanted to change that, or if we want to change it.
Well, if you read the next, the next sentence of each day's offense, will, each day's continued violation will constitute a separate offense, so it's a hundred dollars a day.
A day, yeah.
So, I mean, if you make it too, you know, too high, you're never going to be able-
That's, that's where you-
You're not going to be able to collect. I get the, the point of the penalty is to try to dissuade somebody from breaking the rule.
Breaking the rules and getting it fixed quicker, anyway.
A, a good compromise between the two would be an interest applied to each outstanding day.
That's not a bad idea.
So, it would be like a hundred dollars a day, and then they would accrue an interest at a specified percent, or?
Yeah, okay. I don't know what that would do. Anybody else have anything they found they might want to add to this? I had two things marked.
Where?
Backflow prevention devices.
No.
I wish I'd written, if I had it marked, but I didn't write it enough for what I had it marked. I have to go back and look at that one. We got time anyway, so, I don't know why I had that one marked, but I had it marked to look at again, and I haven't, don't know why. Oh, his or her, for one thing. That might have been it, just because it said his and hers, instead of, you know, taking the gender out and just make it more of a-
A they, them, their type of thing.
Not that, but, you know what I mean, yeah.
That, that's actually like, you're not picking at one the other, you know, like-
Right.
We figured out in something else we already did-
The water consumer shall.
Yeah.
At, I don't even think it needs to be his or her in there.
It'd be like-
Their own, yeah, there you go.
See? That's what I'm saying, it makes sense.
Yeah, there you go, their, their own, instead of his or hers.
And his or hers.
And there's a lot of that all throughout.
That's, that's one of the things I was thinking, that's what Vicky isms came in my brain to where.
I say something that we did, right after I started, we did a, like, replace all of the, where everyone said his or her, we just put they or them.
Which is something we might want to look at for all these. So, I think also, right.
How's that with fewer letters?
Here's another note that I came across on 915.09, where it says water meter corrections shall be made only on weekdays, which are not legal holidays, you know, what's, what's the definition of a legal holiday? I believe we should word it to some extent to say when our utility office is open versus closed for a holiday.
I also, we had that one in here too.
Yeah.
No, honestly, I would just say, when we're open, when the utility office is open weekdays, when you, because sometimes, I mean, there could be something that comes up that causes it to close, and that's already covered.
On 923.17, this was another section that had been changed earlier this year by Ordinance Number 9-2024. And in 9-2024, they did have a table that outlined what the fees were, and, and I know that they decided to take away that table and put in this section that the fee schedule is kept on file at the utility office, so understand that. But in that ordinance, under letter I, Ordinance Number 9-2024 did have a number three, and I noticed that number three is no longer under this section on our new draft, and I didn't know if that was an oversight, or if it was meant to be struck. And what number three says, it's, it's called waiver of deposits, where the Service Safety Director shall waive all connection fees under the following conditions. And number three is, in proven cases of extreme hardship, the city may investigate the feasibility of waiving fees and completing repair work. So, again, I know that was in 9-2024, it was done the 18th of March this year, and now it's not in this one. So, I didn't know if maybe just wanted to double check to make sure that it, you know, wasn't an oversight, and they do want it there, or. And in my quick checking, I will not be coming back up, those are the only two things I saw. Thank you.
On 923-02, uses of public sewers, I was wanting to, I haven't got a chance to call to find out if those are still acceptable levels, or if the levels need to change on those. I didn't look up to see when that, that last ordinance was actually adopted, so who knows?
Was 92302?
Yeah, if that's changed since then or not.
Would that be similar to what Vicky just mentioned, where when you insert a chart, and that chart changes-
That's what, that's what made me bring it up.
That gives us the opportunity to miss that. I almost think that chart should be taken out and saying that it would be on file, wherever it's on file, because if, if this chart changes, and we miss it in here-
It's in the ordinance, yeah.
Now, how are you enforcing it when you're not up to date on it?
Right. I had it flagged in the original, and now I'm looking at the new one.
So, another one of those where it says, you know, as per current code.
Right. Yeah. We could skip all that, take it off.
And a copy of the code may be found in the office, yada, yada, yada.
Yep.
And, and I think it goes without saying, but, you know, when we talked about, Mr. Gobrecht mentioned adding a percentage to the penalties, there are multiple spots right here that have different penalties, so we want to make sure we're going to do that. Once we do it on all of them-
Yeah.
Make them all the same.
Yes, because some districts, there's a $5 charge for a permit, and I'm just thinking, $5 isn't going to cover paperwork and time to, to even make it permit.
I think we, we had that conversation about some other permits recently, and I think at that moment, the conversation went the direction of, you know, they should all be the same, whether it's 20 or 25 dollars, still a nominal fee, but not, like you said, you know, at least needs to cover the time and the paper and-
Yeah, I got it right here on 931-10, licensees in commercial refuse hauling. That's just one where, you know, they're, they're talking about a hundred dollars per, per year for the license fee for the vehicle permit, and then it's $5 per, per vehicle. I thought that $5 per vehicle was-
I guess it depends on the size of the fleet, I mean, I don't think we have any mega-sized fleets that are working here in the, in the city, but-
And also, the only other one I have left is 931-03, rates and times of payments in that section, where it says domestic apartments in two places. Could there be residential apartments instead of domestic?
I think that word is interchangeable, in my opinion. Where's it at in there, Chris?
931-03, rates and time-
Oh, right here in the first sentence, and a domestic premises within-
Yeah. They are interchangeable, but I just didn't know if residential would be a better word.
It makes more sense, I think, to say residential.
Yeah. And that's all I think I have right now, until I looked at the new, new ones that we got today.
Well, if you do, if you change that, you got to change Section 2.
Section 2?
A, Section 2, because that also says-
It probably mentions it a few times.
Yeah.
By the way, I missed when I was looking at that.
Or also, Section B.
Yep.
That's all I have so far, that I've been able to find. If anybody else doesn't have anything right now, I'd like to open it up to Open Projects and the other- Any other open projects anybody wants to talk about? Okay, public participation. Seeing none, I want to adjourn at six thirty-two.
Health and Safety Committee, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at six thirty-four P.M. Members present are Kevin Myers, C. Erin Sherrick, James Mead, and myself, Vicky Deschawn as chair. Excuse me. First, we have public participation. Anybody wishing to speak to the committee, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to approve our September fifth, twenty twenty-four regular health and safety committee meeting minutes.
Vicky, I'll make a motion to approve the September fifth, twenty twenty-four regular health and safety committee meeting minutes.
A second.
I have a motion from Ms. Sherrick, a second from Mr. Myers. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Open projects. Does anybody have any open projects they wish to talk about? I do have, oh, let's see, if you remember at our last health and safety committee meeting, Mr. Fankhauser had asked for the committee to send a letter to the police department. So I sent an email to Chief Ostenheimer and what I said was, please be informed that the Health and Safety Committee has requested draft legislation restricting, restricting the presence of felonious slash registered sex offenders in spaces for children and families. I.e. meaning community pool, school functions, et cetera. At the September fifth, twenty-four Health and Safety Committee meeting, Kurt Fankhauser requested the committee issue a letter to you requesting the following information. The last ten years of statistics on quote, this is verbatim what he stated, how many times there's been a call with a sex offender slash registered sex offender possibly on city property or public property. Mr. Ostenheimer responded back that he forwarded my email on to Mr. Walker, Captain Walker, to respond to. And Captain Walker stated, greetings, Mrs. Deschawn. Thank you for your inquiry about registered sex offenders in public spaces. The Bussar's Police Department does not track this data. Therefore, we cannot generate and/or provide statistics. Quite honestly, there is no way to filter this type of statistic as we do not track sex offender statuses. Offender status reporting is handled by the Crawford County Sheriff's Office. However, I am unsure if they track this statistic in its totality or by individual offender contact with law enforcement. And if I can be any, if I can help any further, please let me know. Regards, Captain Walker. I will say I did not go one step further and contact the Sheriff's Department because we were not asked to contact the Sheriff's Department and.
If I could, I, I think, we're looking at two different things here. I think what Mr. Fankhauser was alluding to was if there were any complaint calls, you know, i.e. there's a sex offender in the park, please send the police. Whereas it sounds to me like Mr. Walker, Captain Walker, thought we were just trying to track the whereabouts when there was no complaint of any misconduct. With that being said, you know, we had a discussion at the end of that meeting where we, we kind of said that we didn't think that there was going to be much data. And quite honestly, whether there is or isn't any data doesn't change the complaint that was brought to this committee and our need to take a look at it, so.
So I think the committee's done what?
What was asked.
So what's our next step with that? Are we awaiting draft legislation or?
Let's see here. Yes, we did request draft legislation of, uh, Mr. Gobrick.
Okay.
Attorney Gobrick.
And that's on your to-do list, I'm assuming?
So I have to make sure that it's something that we can legally do first. That's where I'm at with that.
Fair enough.
Um, any other open projects to discuss? Public participation again. Mr. Long?
Ken Long, six two five, South Spring Street. I just wanted to see if the, is still an open project for the dog bite situation? Dog warden, dog bite, all that that we discussed probably thirty days ago.
Is that on our open project?
I think he's referring to cat by ordinance five oh five with the TNR and stuff.
Oh, TNR, okay. The TNR, we are, um, we'd been holding off, again, because, you know, we were without a law director. And we were having two individuals who are working with, who have taken over the TNR program. Darla Lewis, you know, was doing it earlier and she has stepped back. And I apologize because I do not have the names of the two ladies that I, well, I've spoken with one of them. They are coming in October because they wish to speak to the committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what TNR means.
Oh, here, I.
Excuse me.
I can help with that.
Okay, sure.
Okay, that's the trap and neuter program. It's all the same ordinance, so we can't go further on that ordinance and pass anything till we get it all done. So the dog is another part of the same ordinance. So that's what she's trying, so what she's saying is we're on a standstill because we are, it's all in the same ordinance. The, the dog thing and the cat thing are.
Oh, is it, so this, this is getting wound in with the cats?
Well, because it's the same ordinance and it, it costs money every time we change it. So if we change one thing and then we change another thing.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understand.
But that's what, that's what she was saying is it's just, it's, it's held up because we're, of the changeover.
I understand that. But there's been a lot of discussion about cats and how they're, they're running, running the streets rapid and all that, I get that. But there's been no discussion, as far as I know, about dog bites, how the, the, the ordinance is out of date. It talks about a city dog warden and we don't have that anymore, so it's, it's probably as old as the hills.
And that was part of it that was being changed before, like.
And that was changed in the draft.
Who's, who's, who's changing this?
We, we had that discussion in this committee and that was part of the new draft we're working on, that, that change.
But we don't have it yet.
We just haven't passed it yet.
Okay.
When does, I, I guess I don't understand the process. When does it get discussed?
Well, we already discussed it, uh, probably two months ago at least, where, where that particular portion, and as Vicky alluded to, when, in October, when we finished discussing the, the cat side of things, hopefully we'll have a complete package that we can put together.
And the law director had prepared a draft ordinance. And in fact, I think he's not only prepared the draft ordinance, but we've looked at it and there were some changes made to it. And then the group wanted to come back and discuss some more of the changes of, I don't know if you were here when Victoria Caldwell from the Crawford County Humane Society, she came and had some concerns and questions about our draft. So it's a draft that's been prepared and I believe even revised at least one time. Again, we are waiting for, the ladies are going to let me know when in October they're able to come. I've given them the dates that we have our committee meetings. And also at that time, I'm going to be letting Mrs. Caldwell know, along with Mr. Chikonowitz, who's come up and spoken as well, when we're going to be having discussion again on the trap. And again, we're.
And the whole ordinance, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome, sorry.
No, no.
The TNR portions, trap and release, is that?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. I, this is going to be a fun, but I don't have a dog in that fight, so I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Nor a cat.
All right, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
So anyhow, Ken, once I know when the ladies are going to come and talk, I will definitely let you know so that you can be present at that meeting and then at the same time come up and talk about your issues.
Yeah, that's, you know, well, I've, I've had, or I've already discussed my issues and that's why I'm saying, I don't know where, where that's in print or, or intended in print. That's what I'm saying, you know. I know I was up here and voiced a lot, a lot of opinions on what we need to do and I'm not sure of any that made it paper yet.
Correct me, or.
Refresh.
When you came up and spoke, was Mr. Gurnard here at that time?
I thought he was, because I thought he took notes on it because he was looking into that specific situation too.
Okay.
Yes, because he, he said, you'd said something about it and he was looking into that because the, the neighbor's dog or something.
Yeah. A neighbor dog's one of my problems.
Yeah.
I will check and see if the draft has been redrafted to talk about dogs, but I don't think it has.
That's my, that's my concern.
Yeah, and it, it won't fall away.
All right, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Anybody else?
Can, can we get a copy of the most current version of the draft and get it to Mr. Long so he can look over it?
Sure.
And then he can have all of his points to bring back to us, either, even if it'd be better before the meeting, that way we have time to.
Sure.
To prepare, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vicky?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And while that's still open, since we're live and people can hear us, there are a lot of people that have like constrictors and things like that that are listed as animals that you can't have, that are dangerous. That's another one of those sections that I really think we should look at before we get it passed to see if there's like, things that we could do to help out with animals that you know are in this city that, you know, as long as they're taken care of properly aren't a problem. Like if there's a way that we can get like, tags or something, I mean, like your, your snake's not going to have a tag, but you know, you, you got to go and, and register them, like your dog type of thing. Maybe something like that, just so that they know that that house has snakes and not a big deal, it's, you know.
It is a big deal.
I know that you had brought that up to us before.
Yeah, because, because.
And I would have to go back and listen to the audio to see what Mr. Gurnard had to say about that.
Well, he said we should talk about later or something like that.
Oh, okay.
It was just one of those things, I was kind of hoping people who had animals that, or animals that they'd like to have and haven't broken the law, would, would like to come in and talk. Because I do know that some of those animals on there are just, somebody was afraid of it. Like spiders or, you know.
Or snakes.
Like Kevin really loves snakes. He wants three. But yeah, no, um, it's just, it's one of those things where I think we've got some of it too limited now.
Okay.
Like, they got rid of an issue and, and created a different issue by doing so.
I've written that down.
And no, I do not have snakes anymore.
Mrs. Slater?
Clarissa Slater, thirty-six forty-five, State Route four. And Brandon, this is not picking on you or saying that I know anything better than you because I don't, because I don't have a law degree. So that's not what I'm saying. I'm just, I have a list of things that I can send to you. I know you question the constitutionality of it. But they, I, I have other examples of where they've even, like, the state of Ohio has banned child sex offenders from working with kids even after they're off registration. So, I mean, I know you said that you're concerned that we wouldn't be able to like restrict their movement, but I can definitely send you, like, I have a whole file I can send you just to.
Please send it.
Review, so. But that's just another thing I was seeing, that if the state is supporting it, I don't know, it always can be argued in court, but just a thought.
Have you been provided, Mr. Gobrick's email address?
Yes, he sent it to me that day, so.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mark? That's an inside joke.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
In reference to the, I guess I could say exotic animals that aren't allowed in town, I think part of reviewing the zoning regulations, we need to take a look at revising the banned animals that are on that list.
Okay.
Case in point, I know currently that someone in the village of Plymouth has a pet deer living in his house. Crazy as it seems.
Did you, did you say in the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So I just wanted to let you know that, I mean, recently I was asked about having farm animals in town. Chickens are allowed, but some farm animals aren't, which there's, you have to think of pygmy goats and other smaller farm animals that are basically, can be in a backyard now. So some of that stuff needs to be looked at. So, because more and more people are having fresh eggs in their backyard with chickens and stuff like that, because I think so far this year, just since I've been here, I think twelve sheds have been put in town that have chicken shelves in them. So, because they're, they're being made already by the Amish and Mennonite over in Richland, Ashland counties. So there already been, you can order them that way. So just something that we need to look at. And I think maybe also I need to add something on the building permit possibly if there's going to be animals in the structures, because that might be something for me to share with the fire department. So because of all the rash, I'm not saying it's a conspiracy theory, but all the chicken production facilities that have caught fire recently.
They pay you the five dollars.
Yeah. So just my two cents, the, that list of allowed and restricted or prohibited animals in town, town need to be changed, so.
Thank you.
Clarissa Slater, thirty-six forty-five, State Route four. It's funny, I actually called Mike because where I live, you know, we have seven acres. And I was like, I don't even know if we're allowed to have animals because we have the space for the animals, but we live in town. So I'm like, is there permits? Like, what do I need to do? And he said, well, technically, none of the animals I discussed, you know, not immediately, but thinking of in the future was chickens and goats. Because, you know, my kids get to the age of four H, I was like, that'd be great to do, right? But is that allowed in town? I don't know. But the discussion also came up, I was like, I wonder if in zoning, that's where that could be addressed, like if it's zone residential or something versus, is that what you said? Is that what he said? Because I'm going to feel really silly if that's what you said. I'm so sorry.
That as well.
Your property falls in the LIC district. Which with us revising the whole zoning map.
Yeah.
I think part of the LIC is supposed to incorporate agriculture.
Yeah.
Because before the zoning effect came in, that was all farmland.
Yeah, right.
So because I know your father's farm on the other side, it's in the LIC.
Or my cousin's, yeah.
Your cousin's.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Plus with all the Pickwick.
Right.
It's LIC, but it's agricultural business.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, that was going to say, if that gets brought up, that was my other concern, is that even Pickwick is, so, I guess that's been said, I'm so sorry. I was zoning out apparently.
No pun intended, huh?
Zoning out, I'm going to guess.
All right. I guess that's it for public participation. All right. We will adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting at?
Six fifty-three.
Thank you, six fifty-three P.M.
I've got you.
Plating Committee, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Six fifty-five.
Plating comes to order at six fifty-five. Members, Erin Sherrick, Carolyn Shireman's absent, Vicky Deschawn, James Mead chair. Public participation for plating? Seeing no one. Approval of the minutes from September fifth, two thousand twenty-four, regular plating committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September fifth, twenty twenty-four, regular plating committee meeting.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay, changes to the BCO 1189.03B, general surfacing, general surfacing requirements. So this has been going on for eight months now. Does everything look good with it? Aaron?
Would you just one more time?
Okay. Oh, yeah.
It was the general business district.
Go over what the purpose of, you know, changing this. It had to do with the resurfacing of the streets. Or, not streets.
Parking lots.
Parking lots.
Yeah. So in the general business, come on up.
Be patient with me, I took a fall earlier today.
Are you okay?
Yeah, just my pride. About the general business district parking, we are required to have it paved, correct?
A dustless hard surface. We're just clarifying what was in the old one. I don't have the old one here with me.
This is, this was discussed.
Local downtown business district, yeah.
I say the big, the big change was to make it so that in local downtown business, they could not avoid anything and get special permission from the Board of Zoning Appeals. They wanted it 100% no sands or butts.
In the business, downtown business.
That was, that was the change.
So the downtown business district, it was required the parking lots be paved?
Or hard dustless.
Paved or concrete.
Okay, alright. So one parking lot just got taken care of after, I don't know how many years they were required to have it paved. And I'm not sure which other parking lots still are not up to requirements.
At least two.
Okay, because I know one right now in the general business is gonna be, soon be required to be paved. But I can't speak to that property as of right now.
So.
Until I get more information.
Might need some interpretation.
That, that was my big argument with this was I didn't understand, that was the only thing we were changing, was making it so that the Board of Zoning Appeals couldn't do anything about it and it had to just be done. And at the same time, there's always reasons like, okay, and if you're getting a variance for it, then it should only be temporary, but they were just taking it straight out of their hands and saying, because they thought people were given special permissions and they didn't want that to happen again when this was brought up. So that's the only reason why I've ever been against any of it to begin with. And it sounds like it's getting done and then it has been just temporary things and they're still continuing to work on things. Because you just said one of them's already been done. So now what we have, two left.
Right.
Well, the one took approximately, what, two years for it to be paved.
Some of them, when you come in, you know, as well as I do, when you come in and clear a lot to put a parking lot in, you wanna put some big rock in there to get everything, get a good base.
Right.
So you might wanna keep that for a year, 12 months, but eventually they need to pave it.
For a parking lot to be built and for the base to be settled, if they compact it and roll it with a compactor, you should be able to have it paved that same couple of months later. So I do believe they asked for an extension that they were basically, that should have been enforced that they were told a few months to have it done. So I'm just going by other municipalities I've dealt with before.
So what this ordinance is stating, that if you're in the downtown business district, you have to abide by the requirements and they have to be approved or abide by the asphalt, concrete, cement, or other similar material approved by the engineering department, period. No variance.
None.
Correct.
But the variance is allowed for?
Every place, or residential.
Great, thank you. I just needed confirmation of that.
Well, once the zoning map gets revised and the requirements for off-street parking lots, the possible area lots that fall within that requirement is probably gonna change. Because I'd like to see the parking lots that are in general business fall in that same requirement.
So you're saying that?
Get rid of all the stone parking lots.
We pass this, there's a good possibility, then when we're working on, when the ad hoc committee for zoning starts.
The boundary lines are probably gonna change.
Okay.
I never realized that.
Yep.
See, that's why I kinda like being able to go to a Board of Zoning Appeals and if there's a variance, there's a reason for the variance and they give the time amount for the variance and why the, you know.
But also, I mean, with the regulations that we have.
You, you put all your money into the business and now the lot was all screwed up too. And then you kinda have to have that time to catch up.
From what I've learned the last three months I've been here, you, business owners and, yeah, business owners and contractors, if they're doing work in a town, you better do your due diligence and check what the requirements are to do business and do work in the corporation lands. I've had this talk with five different contractors today. And they're like, oh, I didn't know I had to get registered. I didn't know I needed a building permit. Oh, I didn't know this. And I'm like, well, you do work all over the state. Every municipality requires a building permit. Oh.
Maybe we need a big sign out front that says zoning.
Well, we need to order about 20 of them to put on in the main roads coming in. But that's a perfect world then.
Alright, my assessment of this is we need to table it and not kick it up to full council until we look at the zoning. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Here we go.
Because changing the district boundaries is gonna change a lot.
So some of them that aren't, that are approved for gravel right now, you're not, if we change that, then they're gonna be required, they're not gonna be grandfathered in.
No. No, and I have one right now that's in the, proposed in the general business that borders downtown boundary line. And I wanna change that portion of the general business to downtown. I kinda wanna expand the boundary of the downtown business district.
Yeah, that was, that was so.
Because I think it makes sense to do it. So because I had, here's an example. I had a real estate appraiser ask me about the zoning, zoning requirement for a property that's in general business. And as of right now, it's non-conforming for the zoning district. But yet it was there before the zoning code was ratified or passed. So it's like, he asked me, well, what would happen if it caught fire, burnt to the ground and told me to rebuild it? I'm like, well, there's a clause in the zoning and the building code that if your house is destroyed by fire, acts of God, and the public enemy, which if we had an act of war, that you can rebuild that structure on how it was that day it burnt to the ground. So that is the clause in the zoning that you can rebuild it. But you can rebuild it how it was, but the zoning aspect is it's gonna have to fall in what the zoning regulations say when you rebuild it. I mean, it says now that it's non-conforming, but when you rebuild it, it's gonna have to conform to what regulations we have set. So.
So if we have, if we have a stone parking lot now that's in residential R3 and it gets changed to?
General business.
General business.
Then they're gonna be required to have it paved.
Well, if we do that, then if we have a business that's in, that gets changed over to an R3, it's in general business now, we can't move that business. So that business is grandfathered in unless it stays empty for three years, two years.
Well, also, if you have, here's the thing. Per Ohio EPA is if you disturb more than 5,000 square foot of ground, say you regrade a parking lot, you have to submit a stormwater plan to the city. So you have to, like, you have to show on how you're gonna handle all the surface water off the lot or off the property. So that falls in too now. So.
So we should probably table this and look at it with the zoning. Just saying.
Yeah, because there are requirements for the parking lot is also gonna fall in the requirements for the engineering code. Because of stormwater.
I think we need to table it and talk about it. Because I got a problem with not grandfathering existing businesses in, so.
You may as well stay up there.
Yeah, you just pull up a chair.
It's your turn now.
So table this, is okay?
Yes, yes, please.
amend the codified ordinance to include ponds.
I submitted additional requirements to be added to the pond language.
To?
For submitted to Amanda, or Miranda to be distributed. Additional additions to be added to LIC 87.021. The different section letters might change depending on how it's added. But below is what Dylan and Landon and I reviewed for what needs to be added to the pond ordinance. And below is items that we'd like to see added. Do you guys have any questions?
Brandon, did you get these?
I'm sorry?
Did you get these, the additional requirements for pond language?
They're, they're in the back.
Okay, you got them now.
Do you have any questions, Brandon?
Not at this time.
Okay. Jim, do you have any questions on it?
No, I don't have any questions.
Aaron?
Nope.
Vicki?
No.
Don't move.
I won't.
So marijuana regulations, did you ever hear back from TruLeve?
No, I haven't.
They haven't called back?
No, I, I haven't emailed it to them and I haven't heard.
Do you have anything else on it?
No.
Vicki? Nothing?
I still haven't seen any map online on that map that she was referring to when we talked to her.
Okay.
So I haven't, I haven't seen anything different on that website.
Well, we asked her to get back with you when it was ready to move forward.
Did we decide whether or not we had to do a local thing, accepting the state code for this? Or if we can just go as is and go from there? For where we can have things and where we can't?
We have to at least accept the state code.
Do we have to?
That's the minimum requirement.
The state code's the minimum requirement. Do we have to say, have a local ordinance for it? Or, that was my question.
All the other, well, from what I understand, that I need more, I need to get more information on that before I can answer that.
Okay. I just didn't know if we needed to ask for draft legislation to go with.
We already did.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought we had.
To mirror the Ohio revise code.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we had, but then I kinda haven't seen.
Because that's what you had, excuse me, Aaron.
You're okay.
That's what you had suggested.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a whole department through the state that's regulating all this now. So I can't remember, it's the Ohio Recreational Marijuana Regulatory Board. I can't remember what it's called now. I think that's close. But they have like all the requirements down of what they need to come into a town or location, all the requirements of being so far away from places and that, so. From what I understood from, oh, this is the medical marijuana distributor, was that City of Sandusky was regular, regulating them as basically a retail pharmacy because they were a pharmacy. So they were just regulating them as a retail business. And I don't think currently there are any planned recreational dispensaries in the city of Sandusky. So I do believe there's a recreational one in Perkins Township in Erie County, but I have not heard back from Perkins Township on anything yet. Guess they're currently interviewing for new zoning administration immediately.
You're not, we're not done yet, so.
That's three miles from my parents.
Oh, well.
So that is on your to-do.
It is on my to-do list.
Thank you.
Okay, food trucks.
I have not, I'll have to get back, you can table that on that, I haven't gotten anything. The only thing I have for food trucks is when Kibler's Bar had their opening over the weekend, they had a food truck for the opening. And all they, they just pulled an event permit to have a vehicle on, like a parking area or parking lot space or parking space on the street.
Yes.
So I think that's all they pulled. So.
How much is that?
I am not sure. I don't handle.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, they are free. Event permits are free.
Are they?
Yeah.
And we'd also ask for draft legislation on that as well. And you were provided the documents?
Correct. So I was gonna ask for a point of clarification on the, I believe it's the Fostoria example that was given to me. There are parts of it that are stricken out and substitutions are suggested. Are those Fostoria's substitutions or are those the committed substitutions?
Those would have been Fostoria's.
Fostoria.
Because this is what was provided to be by Chief Schwemley, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, those were Fostoria's, strung out.
I think, I think the copy that he was giving was what they were, it was the revision copy. The stuff was struck out. Chad didn't tell me that, but I assume that's what it meant.
Alright.
So.
We'll take you to a clarification.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Open projects.
We're good. Open projects.
I don't know if I really wanna bring this up, but I am.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think we might have some confusion on this chapter 905. That had to do, and correct me, Kevin, that's sidewalks. And it all started with a letter that we received about a sidewalk at 502 Gay Street. And at one of the meetings, and I've got, but you had asked to combine those two or had them referred to our committee here, the plating. And we're looking for, at chapter 905, substitute. 905 substituting, take out council and put in administration, being responsible for. Yeah. And I think that might be, I don't know if everybody, I know Miranda had sent to me Attorney Goldberg's opinion as to the sidewalk notifications.
Mr. Gert, it's no data, I don't know if Miranda knew, but Mr. Gert notified us that you weren't allowed to send it or we must have had to send it.
Correct. But then Erin was questioning, because we're a home rule state, why couldn't we do our, for lack of better words, own thing? And so then she asked Mr. Goldberg to check into that. 905, Chapter 905 talks more or involves more than just quote, sending the letter to someone saying your sidewalk needs repaired, or you need a sidewalk, you need to repair your sidewalk. First off, council has to do a resolution stating that this particular sidewalk needs repaired. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but that's where you were thinking, well, do you mind just coming up and saying what you were thinking rather than me saying what I think you were thinking?
In essence, I really wanted to take it away from the council and give it to the administration without knowing that we weren't allowed to do that. It was, in a nutshell, what I was attempting to do. I felt like, you know, you look at people like Mike and the service director, you know, that's the things they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, and that's not what this body typically would deal with. And that's why I'd suggest that we make the change until we found out that we supposedly weren't able to.
Go ahead.
To add to that, we don't, we don't have that investigative part of this body to go, we don't have, none of us is Gordon Grove to go look at it and say, yes, this is unsafe.
Not properly trained at it.
Yeah, we're not trained, we're not, that was our idea was if the administration were to send out somebody because of the, just like they would on a house or, you know, they'd also be the ones to send out the letter. Like.
Mike, go ahead.
The whole issue about sending notice to residents about sidewalks that need to be replaced, I don't know if, I mean, that falls under, I don't know if that falls under residential code enforcement, but sidewalks being in public right of way and I take care of doing sidewalk permits and drive cuts and driveway permits, tap fees, permits. I'm not one to make more work for myself, but I think any other municipality, it falls on the administration. I have not talked to Tommy Bruce on this, but that's my opinion. And since I put out the, I've signed the permits or processed the permits for sidewalk cuts and replacements, I mean, ideally, it'd be coming down to me anyway. So, I mean, besides residents submitting calls about bad sidewalks, who would be going out to look at them? Either me or street department. And then I'd end up being the one doing the permits anyway.
I think as a worst-case scenario, if we find out that this body still has to do it, I think Mike could come to us on a case-by-case basis and say, here's a letter we need to send, kind of like we do with traffic commission. They say, hey, here, you need to make this change. I think maybe that might be a fix to allow the professionals to deal with the situation. And if this body has to take care of the legal paperwork side, we can still do that.
But I don't think, I mean, there is a letter to be sent to the property owner, but that letter is not sent until there's been a resolution passed by council.
That's what I'm saying. If they, if they have an issue, they can come to us and we
And then we do the resolution.
Similar to what we do with traffic.
Right, okay.
So we do a resolution for each sidewalk property issue?
It's what our current.
And that's what, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what the Ohio revised code says. Yes, I did read your.
Erin, go ahead.
Because with that, I mean, I'm driving all around town catching people that are not, have building permits, signs and all that. And I mean, I see more uptown through the week than you guys do. So, I mean, I, like I said, it's, I mean, would it be I submit a list of sidewalks or properties to you guys to review that need to be done?
How about just a case-by-case basis?
Because the way I have it set up. Well, when I have, the way I have it set up, I mean, I have my GS, GIS on my tablet set up now for violations of zoning and building codes or no permits. So I can just go around with my GIS and I'm like, okay, that sidewalk's bad. I mean, I can only think of one right now over on.
Gay Street.
That one and popular that was up in the air that, I mean, it was a problem for a while. And I know there's, there was one over by the middle school that was brought up before school started. I don't know if that ever got fixed or not. So I was, I'm on the loop by that one.
And that's where, when I made the comment that I think there may have been some confusion because the opinion that I got here from Mr. Goldberg states that there's not a problem with, you know, someone else sending out the letter. But that's not really what the whole discussion was, and that was not passed on to Mr. Goldberg. We, you know, because I've gone back and looked minutes and listened to recordings and, you know, we talk about letter and letter, and it's like, we know what we meant. So your opinion, I understand and I agree with it, what your opinion was that, yes, anybody can send out the letter. I mean, it doesn't have to be the council clerk.
Correct. It just has to be the direction of the council clerk.
Correct. But our concern was more so, we didn't want to have the responsibility of saying this sidewalk needs fixed and that sidewalk.
This one's okay.
Right. We wanted that left up to the administration. Then, you know, as Kevin's pointed out, then the administration would come to us or your office and say, here are sidewalks that need repaired. And then we would have a resolution stating, here are the sidewalks that need to be repaired. Then once that resolution's been passed, then a letter then is sent out to the property owners with a copy of that resolution stating, hey, I mean, there's a whole procedure here on what you have to do and, I mean, based on what I'm saying then, and I mean, you don't have to answer if you don't want, but do you concur that what Mr. Gert was saying, I mean, it does have to be council as far as we need to do the resolution part?
Correct. It is on the council to do the actual resolution part.
So maybe what we're looking at here under Chapter 905 is not taking out council, the word council and substituting it with an administration because it talks about council doing a resolution and all, that we need to amend this section and direct the zoning office or whatever office to submit to council what sidewalks they feel are need to be repaired, done, constructed.
Okay, so submitting a list to council for sidewalks that need to be replaced?
Yeah, be constructed or repaired.
Again, I mean, I think that's, it would be, make sense for me and Landon to handle that because of engineering projects. We know what streets are gonna be repaved.
Yep.
And get in that process of, I hate to say the word, comprehensive plan for the city because we don't have one. And so that we can be, we have a plan of what sidewalks are gonna be replaced in a timely manner with projects that we have proposed. And it just, yeah, it just seems to let somebody know that their sidewalk needs replaced, I don't get, I don't, I don't agree with the whole, Kevin, do the resolution, when I can stop a contractor by doing work with a stop work notice, just within the last minute.
Yeah, I mean.
Unless I can't, unless I'm not allowed to do that.
I mean, ORC 72902 says, "The legislative authority may declare the necessity for the construction or repair of such sidewalks, curbs, or gutters by the adoption of a resolution."
Okay. Erin, go ahead.
I see, that says may require. That wasn't, that will require. That's, that's, that sounds kinda.
What year was that adopted?
1962.
It needs revised.
This is the Ohio revised code. Now, another thing too is, and maybe it's how we're reading it, where it talks about in Chapter 905, it says, "Upon decision by resolution of council that certain specified sidewalk shall be constructed or repaired," it just says, we're doing the resolution. It doesn't specifically state we have to be the one deciding the sidewalks.
Right.
So maybe we wouldn't have to change and it's just an internal understanding?
Kind of where I was going with it, let them do their thing, and if they need us to do any paperwork, then come to us with it.
And then we do, okay.
If they need us to.
Do we have to follow all parts of the revised code when it comes to sidewalks and capital or public improvements?
I have no clue.
I was gonna say, could you rephrase that?
Do we have to follow all of the revised code even though it's 50 years old? Do we have to follow the revised code when it comes to sidewalk replacement?
I can look into that for more than any of these. Your gut check is that the Ohio revised code is something that we have to follow.
So we have to follow by it?
I believe so.
So I just don't wanna fall into the trap we did a few years ago where Mayor Reeser sent a letter to all the residents telling them they had chipping paint on their house and they need to paint it. And he wasn't here then, but I got a letter. I just don't wanna fall into that. I mean, there's gotta be some criteria. You're gonna have to have pictures. You just can't mark it on a GPS.
Well, there's, that's what I'm gonna do. I might have taken pictures of what.
You're gonna have to, and that's gonna take a crap load of time.
But then we'll be pulling signs.
You gotta do both.
Yeah, well, yeah. So.
Okay.
Okay, so we're leaving this.
Yep.
Hold on.
Mr. Goldberg's going to check and see if we have to follow, I mean, you've already said we need to follow the Ohio revised.
If we can interact with it for home rule.
Yes, I will give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, 1125 Hill Creek Street. So Jim, how's this gonna play into effect with the property maintenance code on this section of sidewalks?
And that'll be the rest of that?
I sat back there and I was like, listening to this.
That was what she was laughing about back there.
Yes, it was, because remember, we had a lengthy discussion about that because someone could, under the current property maintenance code, the current one that is adopted by the city, the 2012, okay, anybody anonymous can turn it into property maintenance as an anonymous thing that the sidewalk needs to be fixed. And per the International Property Maintenance Code, 2012 edition, which is adopted currently with the city of Piscirus, that they would have to go out and investigate and make the sidewalk be fixed. So how's that all gonna mesh together with the Ohio revised code? And I didn't hear the one term that normally you hear in the Ohio revised code is shall.
You wanna go.
Okay, which is a good technical term that a lot of things say. I heard may. So I know that's a, two versions of it. Big difference in there in the code that it's that old. But I just wanted to ask you how that was gonna play with the property maintenance code?
We'll have to look at it.
Yeah, I know. All right, thank you.
All right.
Sidewalks are regulated by the engineering code. The slope of the sidewalk width is all set by the engineering code.
Okay.
Thickness and everything. Even though the property owners are required to, I think it's a very questionable requirement, but I don't think it falls in the property code. I mean, they're required to maintain and replace it.
I think there's just a section in there, and I don't have it with me. I don't know exactly what it says. I just have to look at it and.
I don't know. I can't make a comment of what I was, I wanted to comment on because it falls within the public right of way.
Public right of way. Okay, is that it for open up projects? Table that for now.
We're tabling sidewalks?
Yes, I believe so.
I just wanted to keep a note. Let's do what we're doing. Thank you.
Any public participation?
I am not.
Sorry. Clarissa Slater, 3645 St. Ralph 4. I wanted to come up, but I knew it wasn't public participation yet, so I just wanted to wait for the appropriate time. I had a conversation with you about the whole sidewalks issue, grants that you're wanting to look at in the future when we're not so, everything's so complicated.
I just wanna get caught up a little bit before we start on that.
So you're not gonna believe the words that are gonna come out of my mouth right now, but I had a conversation with Mr. Fanghauser, and this was his idea. I don't know why he hasn't brought it to this committee, given this issue, but he suggested, and it kinda came up with Kevin's suggestion too about the traffic commission, that a commission is formed to address this issue and it'd be called like a sidewalk commission. And it worked very closely with the traffic commission.
That falls under zoning. It's not traffic.
What?
Traffic commission is, is only involved with the.
Right.
The flow of traffic.
It was, it would be separate.
The boundaries of a roadway.
Right. I'm saying that this would be like a separate entity. You don't think that's a good idea? That's your job? Okay. Well, that was just a thought that he had. So at least now it's been presented. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public participation for plating? Adjourned at?
Finance Committee, September 19th, 2024.
Recall finance order at 7:35 PM. Members that are present are Mr. James Mee, Mr. Christopher Maritz, Mrs. Vicky Deschawn, and myself as chair. First item is public participation. Any public participation for the finance committee. Seeing none, you have in front of you the minutes from the September 5th, 2024 Regular Finance Committee Meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 5th, 2024 Regular Finance Committee Meeting.
I'd like to second that. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Mee and a second by Mr. Maritz. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Mee?
Yes.
Mr. Maritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, that motion passes. Next, we have up creation of funds. I'll turn it over to the auditor.
Hi, we would like to create funds, which, two which go to fund our Victims Advocate through grants along with a portion paid from the general fund. The first fund would be 285 2025 Ohio Crime Victims Assistant Program 7728 Victim Advocate, Item Number 21 Personal Services and 24 Materials and Supplies. Fund number two would be 286 2025 Victims of Crime Act. It would be program 7728 It would be Program 7728 Victims Advocate and Item 21, Personal Services. The final fund we would be creating is for the purpose of planning and building a, our new wastewater plant. It would be Fund 417, New Wastewater Plant, Program 7535 Sewage Disposal, Item 25, Capital Outlay, Program 7540 Sewers and Drains, Item 25, Capital Outlay.
All right, so we need a motion as an emergency to create these funds.
I'd like to make a motion as an emergency.
I have a motion by Mr. Me as an emergency to create these funds. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moritz. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we talk about new wastewater plant, I mean, new is not meaning new.
Yes.
But I know there's been a question.
Mm-hmm.
Are we building a new plant?
Ooh.
Part of that remains to be seen yet with our final plan.
Right, that's what I thought. Yeah.
So maybe there's a better way to word that, that, to fund new construction.
Yes, well, I can, okay, what if we change? Can we do this in real time?
Yes.
The new bottom.
Yes, if we take out new, we just do wastewater plant construction? Would that work?
That would be wonderful, because I think that's misleading.
Yes.
The new wastewater treatment plant is to increase our capacity of treatment. So it's adding on, I don't want to say it's new, it's just an expansion to increase the amount of untreated water through the system. So not totally getting rid of what's there, you're expanding it, so.
I'm just thinking of the general public and when you hear new.
I think it should say expansion, expansion of the existing.
Well.
Sort of treatment.
That might be too long of a name.
With what expansion?
Well, if we just, if, so if, I think if we leave it construction, then it gives room if they do feel that they need to create something work to come down the line, we have to create new, we can leave it that same name. Where if we did an expansion and they realize that they had to construct something, then construction covers both, I think. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Just take out new.
Yes, so it'll just be.
Exactly as you've worded it, minus the word new.
Yep, and adding construction to the end.
Mr. Me, I'm gonna offer you the opportunity to amend your.
I'd like to amend it, strike new, add construction, wastewater plant.
Still as an emergency?
As an emergency.
And a second by Mr. Moritz. Any further discussion? All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that motion passes. Next is appropriations. Back to the auditor.
All right, first it would be the appropriations for the SVAA grant for the Victims Advocate. This is that Fund 285, 2025 Ohio Victims, sorry, Ohio Crime Victims Assistant. That would be Program 7728 Victims Advocate, $10,590 appropriating onto Item 21 for Personal Services. Then we would appropriate, this is the appropriations of OWDA loan for the purpose of planning the new wastewater, taking out new wastewater plant construction. Under Fund 417, wastewater plant construction under Department, or sorry, Program 7515 Solid Waste, Item Line Capital Outlay appropriating $2,973,952.45. That was the total amount of the loan. Finally, appropriations for solid waste electric. That would be Fund 750, Solid Waste Management, Program 7535 Sewage Disposal, Item Line 23 Contractual Services appropriating the amount of $1,200.
I will entertain a motion for these said appropriations as an emergency.
Your turn, please.
I'll second that. I believe he said, I believe he said it was your turn.
Was my turn? Yeah, it's your turn. I'd like a big motion for appropriations for September 19th, 2024.
As an emergency.
As an emergency.
I have a motion by Mr. Moritz.
I have a second by Mr. Me. Is there any discussion?
No.
If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that motion passes. Vicky, is there any open projects in finance you wish to discuss?
No.
Mr. Me?
No.
Mr. Moritz?
No.
Any public participation for finance? Just making sure. Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 7:42 PM.